Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention. Perhaps not. I'm Michael Trimble, I'm the chairman of the Town and Village Planning Board. We try to develop some sort of educational training sessions for our planning board on issues that affect our town. Business planning leaders who has excellent programs and we couldn't even benefit those as well. But every now and then there's certain issues we think if we could certainly try to figure out something that we need to deal with, we try to put something together. And short-term rentals, Airbnb, obviously in our community and I believe in all of your communities, has become a real issue. It can be a... yes?
I'm sorry, James Trump, but could you speak louder?
Actually, I can use the microphone. You do have a microphone.
So I got to get too freaky.
I'm hoping that this is a little better and if it starts, I hope there will be backfeed. The Airbnb, the short-term rentals, they have a lot of economic benefits to our communities and they've been very helpful. We have our communities, we have a lot of events, but a lot of things like that, we don't have a lot of hotels and motels. So there's a very positive side to it, but there also can be problems that I think you're all aware of. When we put this together, we thought that there are other communities in our area who would also be interested. So we tried to invite everyone who could possibly come, who'd be interested. We're delighted that we have our Commisional Planning here tonight with Dutchess County. There's a lot that county can do to help us with too. Who we have to speak to you tonight are our planners for the Town of Rhinebeck, Planning for Places, Jim Levy and Kathy Timber. And our town planning attorney, John Lyons from Branton Lyons and Kimberly Harrison with the firm also. They're going to be doing a presentation on the different issues that they are aware of, that they've worked on, that they've closely deal with. And after that, we'll just let them open it up to hear what's going on in your communities, what your problems have been, what your successes have been, or where you've really hit roadblocks to within a problem. Because we know it's a difficult issue to deal with and we're all trying to do our best with it. So we also have refreshment up here, if anyone wants cookies, things like that and water, so please feel free. So I'm going to turn this over to Jim to get things going.
Thank you, Michael. Well, I'll give a one second for our PowerPoint to come back up. We kicked the cord out and thank you back here. There we go. Okay, so thank you, Mike, for the intro. I'm Jim Levy from Planning for Places. Here is Kathy Timber, we're the planners discussing this today. With us is John and Kim from Branton Lyons as well, discussing the legal aspect of this. Where I think is really where a lot of the discussion will come in. We thought it would be good at first just to go around the room, maybe just go row by row. Because everyone can say who they are and where they're from, so we're, you know, who's in the room and who we have here. Start here, let's work our way around.
Mary Quinn, Village Rhinebeck Planning Board.
Edna Lockman, Rhinebeck Planning Board.
Sheriff Gerard, Rhinebeck Town Planning Board.
Don Warner, Village Rhinebeck Assessment.
Andrew Bursonett, Village of Tivoli, resident.
Martha Gershon, Rhinebeck resident, Rhinebeck Village.
Cynthia Kernan, Innkeeper at the Old Rhinebeck Inn.
Matt Sabia, Town Rhinebeck Assessor.
John Russey, Village of Rhinebeck Trustee.
Paul Higgins, Rhinebeck Resident.
Joe Welch, Rhinebeck Resident.
Anne Saylor, Dutchess County Planning.
Owen Rafter, Dutchess County Planning Development.
Jack Osbitt, Cleveland Planning Board.
Colin Myers, Town Planning.
Joel Griffith, Mayor, Village of Tivoli.
Michelle Brad, Fort Worth's Planning.
Attac Nick D, Town Board of Wyland.
Toby Allen, Supervisor of Town Board.
Chauncey Walker, I live in the Village of Rhinebeck and I serve on the Rhinebeck Town Board.
Harry Cullen, I live in the Village of Tivoli, but I'm on the Red Hook Town Board.
Bill Hamill, Town of Red Hook Planning Board.
Bill O'Neil, Town of Red Hook...
What do you call it, something?
Town Board.
Town Board. And also on behalf of the Red Hook Inter-Municipal Task Force, which has been looking at Airbnb's few months.
Mike Witten, Town Board of Quinn.
Oliver Warner, Clinton Town Board.
Heather LeVar, Dutchess County Planning.
Ann Weiser, Hyde Park Planning Board.
Nanya Lynch, Rhinebeck Resident.
Amanda Bodian, Economic Development Committee from Red Hook.
James Delollio, Rhinebeck Resident.
Dable Riley, Promiscuous at Brant Breaks in Rhinebeck.
Mary Kay Burley, Dutchess County Resident.
Diane Denaply, Hyde Park Planning Board and Administrator for Hudson Valley Lodging Association.
Elizabeth Pagano, I'm the Chair of the Village of Red Hook Planning Board and Honors of the Grand Dutchess at Brant Breaks.
Mike Key, Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board.
John Fatten, Design Enforcement Officer with the Village of Rhinebeck and the Village of Tivoli.
John Parker, Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board.
Ryan Dowden, Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Board.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. I think it shows we have a good cross-section of representatives from local municipalities here today. And I think that will help us in the discussion we have later on. So the agenda for today really is to go through, you know, those of us up in the front here will make some, a presentation, try and get some thoughts going on this, although I'm sure you probably have plenty of your own already. But we'll talk about some of the planning level elements and then get into a discussion of legal considerations, what can and can't be done and what is being done. And then really the point of our presentation is to just kind of put some ideas out there, let you know what's happening and then really get a discussion going amongst you here in the room about what you're doing, what your concerns are, what your thoughts are about this, so that you can talk to your peers and your other municipal officials, so we can all hear kind of what's going on around the region. Yes, I kind of covered that one. So generally speaking, as I'm sure you all know, short-term rentals are defined as a rental lasting less than 30 days. These rentals and these short-term rentals were, in particular, really considered part of the sharing economy. And most often nowadays, they're found using Airbnb, VRBO, HomeAway and other online resources. This is just a screen capture of what the market looks like today in the Town and Village of Rhinebeck. I just took this last week. So on any given day, when you take a look through the Town and Village and you can take a look anywhere up and down the Hudson Valley, you will see a number of units that are available for rent through these online sites. And one of the things we wanted to find out, in particular from a planning perspective, is that there is a lot of attention on this right now. Airbnb came out with a study called Sharing for Stronger New York, and I'll get into some of that in a second. But the Daily Freeman, the Times Union both recently just picked up on some of these statistics and what's going on, talking about how Airbnb hosts earn millions, earned millions of dollars just in the last year or two. So these are some of the statistics that are in the Airbnb document that they're putting out there right now to show what it is that's going on related to Airbnb and really the economic impact that they state that they're having throughout the state. And it's really, you know, pretty impressive if you look at the numbers. And they really are trying to make a point that it does have a significant impact and significant presence here in the state of New York. Specifically in the Hudson Valley, or what they're defining as the Hudson Valley, these are the numbers that they came across. You know, they're claiming $3.1 billion, $3.1 billion in economic activity, supporting 33,000 jobs across the six regional study areas. But here in the Hudson Valley, $75 million in economic activity and 77,000 Airbnb guests. So that's a significant presence, there's a lot going on, and that's why I think there's such interest in this right now and serving one of the reasons we're here today talking about it. So short-term rentals, you know, they're not new. I think we've all known, they've been going out for a long time, particularly in vacation destinations. People have been renting houses for a long time. I think the change has been the availability of these units and the ability to get to them online. It's made it a lot easier, so there are a lot more people doing this now. And the ability of people to get online and put their houses online, as well as people being able to find those houses, has become a lot easier. And well, we're not going to get into this in detail. You know, there is kind of like this subtle difference between Airbnb and VRBO and HomeAway. You know Airbnb is somewhere where business travelers go or someone who wants to go for a day or two. Where you typically find VRBO and HomeAway are maybe more focused on people who are going out for vacations. Kind of a subtle difference, but essentially we're looking at the same thing, they're all short-term rentals. And all these short-term rentals have led to a really rapid proliferation of home sharing, as I mentioned earlier. And it's really being looked at, and I think again, the reason we're here today is that a lot of people are seeing that as an alternative to traditional lodging arrangements. And so it's changing the way things are done from the planning side, from the zoning side, the legal perspective. And with that, I will turn it over to Kathy.
So as Jim mentioned, home sharing is really a part of that larger sharing economy. And that is done through a lot of, you know, website apps, technology. And the key issue is that home sharing has the potential to change the character of established residential areas, which is why a lot of communities are learning what to do about it. So to get a hand on this, communities are looking at how best to accommodate both the demands of these new types of lodging without undermining land use, housing, transportation and zoning goals. And typically, there are three types of short-term rentals. Hosted sharing, where the primary occupants remain on-site with guests. Unhosted sharing, where the primary occupants leave during the time where their unit is being rented by guests. And then dedicated vacation rentals, where there's no primary occupants during that time. And the main reason people are doing this is, you know, it's easy extra income for property owners. Generally, it's more lucrative than a traditional lease arrangement. And it appeals to travelers looking for an authentic experience when they're coming to an area. And in some cases, maybe more affordable than maybe a hotel or motel. So generally, what communities are finding is that fanning short-term rentals is not typically recommended just because there's an ability to identify the unwanted behaviors and negative consequences of short-term rentals through some practical policies to mitigate those. And we'll hear more about that later on. And so the American Planning Association notes that in places with significant rental markets, additional regulations may not be needed. However, when there is a shortage of affordable rental housing or unmet demand for rooms in hotels or motels, then new standards and procedures might be appropriate. And I think John is going to talk about some of those details.
Thank you. We have been working with some communities in the Hudson Valley that are looking at this phenomenon and trying to figure out how to best address it. And there are, I think it's safe to say that there's a widespread recognition of the need to address this. But figuring out how to do that has presented some difficulties for many communities. And as a result, there's been a lot of talk about doing something, a lot less action about actually doing something. But we, we have some ideas that we'll talk to you about today that are based on our experiences with the communities that we've worked with. And that includes not only working with the boards, after all, figuring out what to do about this is a land use policy decision for town boards. But it's also a subject that the public is very, very interested in. And we've had the opportunity to sit through a number of public hearings in communities where regulation of short-term rentals has been considered. And it's given us a very good chance to hear comments raised by citizens in those communities that has cut across the whole spectrum of interests. But the two obstacles, I think, that we have seen that have been holding back forward action on this. One, for want of a better term, I've called it political controversy. Meaning that there is an unanimity among citizens and communities about the approaches that should be taken to this land use. And the second one is the practical difficulty in crafting the regulations. And we'll talk more about that as we go forward. Our view is that short-term rentals are here to stay. They're only going to get bigger and they're actually the leading edge of other elements of the sharing economy that may end up introducing commercial activities of some scale into residential areas. There is, there's a service that's out there now where you can, I don't know, if you've got some, a corner of your basement that's empty and you want to rent your space to somebody who wants to store something, that is, that puts people together for that. So short-term rental is really just the vanguard of probably a whole host of other land uses, organic connect, where organic connections give them the start. And communities need to figure out what to do about it. And I think that everybody agree, everybody that's out there in the communities that we've talked to agrees that short-term rentals can be wonderful, especially for communities that have a significant tourist economy. Short-term rentals provide an opportunity to bring people to a community, to introduce them to your community. People that come in and stay are customers for restaurants and other businesses that are located in towns and villages that serve visitors to the area. But there's also, like any, like many land uses, there are, there can be some adverse impacts to that. And so the desire that's out there is to try to figure out a scheme of dealing with them that brings a balance to helping out your economy, but also making sure that communities maintain the quality of life and the community character that they want to maintain. Just in terms of legal issues, this is just touching the base. Is this something that communities legally have the authority to regulate? And the answer is yes. This is a land use, just like many, you know, any other land use that municipalities are able to regulate. We'll talk about this in a little while, but there can be a perception on the part of some folks that because these STR uses kind of evolved under the radar and have been largely unregulated, that there's some entitlement for them to stay that way, but that's not true. Okay, there's been, that is a good segue into this slide, which there has been some vigorous opposition to municipal regulation of short-term rentals in some communities. Largely because up to this point, there have been lots of people that have been operating these uses and without being regulated at all. And obviously, from a bureaucratic and business standpoint, it's great not to be regulated, you can do whatever you want. Most of the time, in the public hearings that we've been able to participate in, the most vigorous opposition comes from folks who are actually, short-term rentals actually become their business. They're the owner of buildings and they don't live in those buildings and their business is renting the spaces in those buildings out to short-term rental tenants. There are also, you know, local businesses that benefit from the people that short-term rentals bring to the community. Also sometimes express some opposition. And I think there's a note on this slide that there's, sometimes there's a lack of comprehension that, you know, most zoning laws contain provisions that say if a use is not specifically allowed by the table of uses, then it's prohibited. And in most communities, short-term rental is a land use that is not allowed because it's not on the use tables, because lots of our use tables are outdated in lots of ways. And short-term rental isn't a use that you see listed a lot. And it's also, I was on my own, I'm, I live in Rhinebeck and I was on my own town's comprehensive plan revision committee. And our comprehensive plan was adopted in 2009, which is not ages ago. I can tell you, we never even came close to thinking about short-term rentals at that time. And I think that that's something that's true about a lot of communities. So short-term rentals, unless they are allowed, they are illegal. And I think a lot of folks miss that. And that also touches another sort of legal issue. Sometimes we have seen the term grandfathering being kicked up by folks who are seeing the possibility of short-term rental regulation on the horizon. And in order to, you know, in zoning lingo, we say, instead of grandfathering, we call them non-conforming uses. And in order to be a valid non-conforming use, you have to have been at one time a legal use before the use got prohibited. So in most cases, if you're not operating legally, you're not going to be grandfathered. There's also vigorous community support for regulation because there are, the simple fact of the matter is, and again, this is something that has been something that we've been able to see through testimony in public hearings, that it's a reality that there are instances where there are problems. I think that if you talk to town supervisors, mayors, and you'll see that they are dealing with some level of complaints about all different kinds of issues. Trespassing noise, unruly conduct, you know, big parties, things like that. Things that have impacts off the site of the rental property and affect the quality of life for neighbors. And you'll see the last bullet point here kind of gets to the core. The real friction point here is it's the conduct of a commercial activity in a residential area. And although that is something that we deal with a little bit in zoning, in large part under traditional, you know, under a traditional zoning scheme, those kinds of uses are often kept separate, commercial and residential. So our personal opinion is that the need for regulation is a given. The real question is that there are a variety of different options out there to deal with it. We're going to talk about that, and the real question is where to go with that, how to figure that out. So one of the things that our suggestion to communities that we're working with is, we say, going back to basics. Sometimes it's your comprehensive plan, which you've spent a lot of time drafting and conducting visioning sessions. Sometimes the poor old comprehensive plans get forgotten. But they're really a fountain of information about how communities see themselves, what the community's vision for itself is and how we want to grow. And even though, for instance, in Rhinebeck, you know, we weren't thinking about short-term rentals at the time this plan was adopted, there's still a lot of information in the plan about how we see our future that gives us lots of clues about how to deal with short-term rentals. And for instance, in Rhinebeck, you know, preservation of community character is one of the, in the surveys that were done, was one of the qualities that almost had unanimous agreement amongst respondents to the survey. And when you start looking at those things, you can begin to draw some guidance about what you want to achieve with, if you're going to go ahead and regulate short-term rentals. One of the other phenomenon that we've observed is that talking about the regulation is very easy and it seems like it should be pretty easy to do it. And then once you lift up the hood and start getting your hands down into the details, it's, it can be complicated. Not like splitting the atom, but complicated like there's a, there were quite a few things that need to be sorted and considered. I don't think that we've seen a zoning amendment that deals with short-term rentals that's been shorter than, that I think that we have respect for what the content is, that's shorter than 15 pages. That's, weight of words isn't itself an indicator of quality, but what that does say is that there is a significant amount of ground to cover in, in the subject matter. I'm just going to run through quickly, these, some of these things that, that we suggested you should be thinking about are probably intuitive, but I just want to talk about them for a second. And the most obvious one is location. Figuring out where in your community you want these activities to take place. We've divided our communities into zoning districts and that gives us a way to address uses in particular parts of the community. And residential districts, again, you want to be very careful about what's allowed in residential districts so that the goals of those districts can be honored in whatever activities you're allowing to take place there. In lots of zoning laws, there are wonderful purpose statements about individual districts that don't often see the light of day, but they are a great insight into what was in the minds of the folks that were writing the zoning law at the time, and they actually can be very instructive. Lots of communities are allowing a lot more activity in districts that are mixed residential or commercial or commercial or industrial. Obviously, because the view is that the impacts to residential use and the tariff of the areas are better able to handle some of the impacts that come along with short-term rentals. Scale is another thing that communities are looking at, and there are two elements to scale. One is the scale of the use itself as it's taking place on a particular property. Communities have taken various approaches to this. There are limits on the, we've seen different proposals for limits on the number of days in a year that a particular premises can be rented. There are limits on the number of rooms that can be rented in a particular circumstance because things sometimes get, we'll talk about owner occupied in a second, but there are sometimes differences with regard to whether the rooms that are being rented out are in a primary dwelling or whether they're in an accessory dwelling on the property. And there's also some consideration being given to the size of the property on which the rental units are located because, you know, it's a little bit different if you're in a village setting and you're on a quarter acre parcel than if you're out in the country and you've got 30 acres or something like that. So scale per, you know, at the site of the rental is something that's being considered. The other thing is that there are some communities that are thinking about scale in a macro sense of how much short-term rental do we want for the entire community. And the thinking about scale is really born of concerns about the interaction between what short-term rental housing does and how that affects a particular community's stock of affordable, regular old rental housing. And there are some communities that are concerned about short-term rental just not eating all of the housing rental opportunities in a particular community. There are some things that we'd need, I don't know that we've seen a town-wide or municipality-wide cap going place or some other things that would have to be considered with regard to that. But, but that's something that, that communities are, are talking about. Defining the uses, I would just say in your community, it's really important to make sure, in every zoning law, really as much definition to the terms that are used in the zoning law is really something that's very important. And we counsel the communities that we work for that every single use that appears in your use table will have to have a definition in the zoning law, so we always know what we're talking about. We run into a number of times where the use is there and somebody comes in and we're all scratching our heads trying to figure out, is this really what that is or not? Having the definition really helps. But there's also stratification, and this was alluded to earlier, about different types of short-term rentals. And the number of days, the kind of property that it's taking place in. There are some communities where they're treating it as a home occupation and so you have major home occupations and minor home occupations. And so you need to break all those things down. And the key is to make sure that it's written into the zoning law so that when someone comes to town, they can open your zoning law and read it and understand what your scheme is. And then in the worst-case scenario, if your CEO and ZBA end up getting asked to interpret, they've got the guidance that they need to move forward. So defining the uses is one of those things that is, sounds easy, but then ends up getting more complex as you start thinking about it. The manner of regulation is something else that you have to think about and there are a variety of options out here and we're beginning to have track records with regard to those. So I'll just speak briefly about the two ends. The one end of the spectrum is a registration system that does not require, there's an application form application form and certain criteria that the municipality sets that needs to be met by a premises in order to be able to get what essentially amounts to a license. And you apply for the license to the building department and you get the license. And it doesn't require the approval of the planning board. The other end of the spectrum is a more traditional approach where communities require that there be special use permit or site plan approval or both. And that use goes through the planning board in the same way that for years and years, municipalities have been regulating bed and breakfasts, and in most of the communities that I've seen, bed and breakfasts require a special use permit and they, and site plan approval very often. And so in that scheme, they're treated just like many other uses. And then there are some, there's the possibility of having something in between. There's been some discussion about having, setting up planning board reviews that are, where there's an abbreviated set of criteria where you actually do come before the planning board, but there's, the process has been designed to make it sort of maybe a one or two meeting affair, and then you're finished. So there are lots of options out there, and there are, Kim's going to talk a little bit when I'm finished about some things that are actually being done across the spectrum in other communities. So you don't have to completely reinvent the wheel, there are some things that are going on. How to ramp up, how to get yourself ready, and that's something that is coloring the scheme that is being, the regulation scheme that's being used in some communities because you, it's an unusual situation for a community to be dealing with a new use where there are 250 examples of that use already up and running and taking place in the town. And now you're talking about stepping in and regulating those uses, and you have to come up with a way to get the people that are already doing these uses, but against whom there's been no enforcement. You have to, you want to get them up, get them into compliance with the system that you're setting up and get everybody going. And so one of the things that's been driving the, that's a factor that's been driving the registration system because it doesn't involve having, you know, 100 new applications to the planning board to go through and issue special use permits and site plan approval. And there's also, there are also some private companies that are out there that are providing services to municipalities, host compliance and, what's the other one, Kim, STR Helper?
Yeah.
That provide administrative services to municipalities to help them manage their program so that the, I don't want to call it a problem, but the challenge that is, that are facing municipalities now is so widespread that it's, there are companies actually set up to try to help meet that challenge. So ramping up is something that you have to discuss. You have to make sure your, whatever scheme you are going to put in place, that your planning board or your building department is going to be able to have the man or woman power to get done what you want to do. Amnesty is another thing you have to think of because, again, you're saying that people that are operating are operating illegally. None of the communities that we are working with have a desire to penalize those folks. Instead, what they really want to do is to try to bring everybody into the tent of regulation and get the regulation going in place. And sometimes you have to have an amnesty period in place to cover that period from the time that you enact your amendment up to the time that you want to get, give everybody a year or something like that to get in, apply, get online, all that. Enforcement, something that's really important in a variety of different ways for these types of uses. If you're not enforcing your law, it's meaningless in certain ways, and it can also undermine competence in the law. So whatever your, whatever scheme a particular municipality decides to adopt to control these things, it has to be something that, a scheme that the community has a practical ability to follow through with the enforcement. And that's another consideration that is driving municipal enthusiasm for a registration and license sort of setup because enforcement can be a little bit easier because the degree of regulation isn't as complicated. And again, this is another area where you can outsource compliance and enforcement if you want to. But you need to make sure that the resources that you have in town hall are going to be sufficient to be able to carry through with the enforcement of whatever regulatory structure you end up putting in place. What are other municipalities doing? We talked about this. There are lots of municipalities that are talking but not doing anything. I think Beacon kind of famously threw their hands up recently because they couldn't really decide to dive in on this. But we think that because this type of use is growing, it's just making, waiting, continuing to wait is going to make it harder. It, there's been, there aren't too many instances that come up with land use law where you have completely new uses. I mean, a lot of, if you are familiar with zoning laws, and you know, a lot of them are derivative in a sense that, you know, we're sort of, we have versions of the things that have been successful in the past and in other places. And one of the aspects of this that was a headwind for new regulation was that it presented some issues that were pretty unique, and municipalities were understandably careful about diving in. But just like with Uber in New York City and whatnot, you know, the market isn't waiting, and some of the bolder and more assertive municipalities are now moving forward. And as I said, Kim's going to talk about that a little bit, and we're starting to see what's being done. And I think that what you are going to see is that once the leaders in this area put regulations in place, and I will tell you around the country, in San Diego and in San Francisco and in New York City, these regulation of these uses are all up and running and running pretty successfully. So once it's something that, I think that there's more confidence on the part of municipalities to get going, I think it's really going to take off. And that'll be a good thing because there are other issues that are circling around here, you know, there, I don't know, maybe Owen can talk about what's going on in Dutchess County, but I've heard rumors in other counties that other counties are interested in taxing this. Massachusetts just passed a statewide tax on STR. And so there's, there are different elements of government regulation that are already starting to reach out and touch this activity. And I'm going to turn it over to Kim Garrison from my office, and she's going to tell you a little bit about what's actually happening.
Didn't want to, you know, keep that, you know, so, good idea. So as John mentioned, there's basically three categories that municipalities have been taking for short-term rentals. One is prohibition, just not right either, it's not allowed, as John mentioned in Beacon. And what happened with Beacon was that they were, actually had a kind of like a registration system that they were trying to pass, and just recently, I believe in May of 2018, they got three to two vote against it, and then their position is that, as John mentioned, because it's not allowed use at the moment, it's currently not allowed anywhere in Beacon. It's not to say it's not going on in Beacon, but technically it is prohibited everywhere in Beacon. Another area where they just figured out where it was appropriate and where it wasn't appropriate was Village of Lake George. Lake George is one of the few municipalities that I've seen in my interview that actually have defined what short-term rental is. It's actually now defined use in their zoning code. It's defined as use or occupancy of a single-family dwelling for less than six consecutive months pursuant to a verbal or written agreement for a payment of rental fee. And what the Village of Lake George has done is that they have said that it's prohibited in residential areas. It is actually considered a commercial use up in Lake George, so in the commercial district it is allowed use, and it's actually done as bed and breakfast, hotels, motels, where you need a license to operate it. But in residential zone, it is considered a prohibited use, so you just can't do it in the residential zones. One of the more popular things that we've seen municipalities do is a registration system. As John said, this is just a matter of filling out an application, providing certain information that you want to know. Typically, they want to know the owner's name, address, phone number. A lot of municipalities have wanted to seek a local contact person. Sometimes they want to have a local contact person if the principal residence isn't in the county. That's how Athens has decided when you need to have a local contact person. There's other places that say that the, there has to be a host that's within 10 miles of the rental property, something that in case there's an emergency, in case there's a noise complaint, in case there's something else that the town needs to address, there's somebody that can contact. And then also for the guest purposes, a lot of times these municipalities want to have some sort of location where the guests will have access to a local contact person in case they need to do that. Registrations also try to seek the number of bedrooms that are being used. Some municipalities actually have a limit, maximum occupancy of two per room. And you'll see on my next slide, the town of Athens actually provided a nice table in their registration so that there's really no confusion as to what's permitted for a short-term rental in their municipality. And then other ones, you know, they want to know things that you wouldn't really think of, but garbage is a big problem. Sometimes, you know, town pickup for garbage is once a week, and if you've had people staying over the weekend, you know, if they leave their trash bins out for, on Sunday, that doesn't get picked up until Tuesday, and some places like Catskills, you know, with bears, there's issues, you know, with leaving trash out for that long of a time. So some municipalities have been wanting to actually know what your garbage schedule is, what your plan is for if you have people staying over, you know, how is that garbage to be stored before you put it out? Some, actually Woodstock hasn't passed ordinance yet, but they're, it's in the process of being it, and they are one of the municipalities that want to know garbage collection, and they have a rule, I believe, that you can't keep your garbage receptacle out for more than 24 hours. And then in a next, in a few slides, I'll actually show you a proposed, I think it's for Athens, that actually has a registration form, so you can see what exactly that looks like. It's usually just a page. East Hampton is another one that actually has a registration system. And interesting about East Hampton is that they actually have a system where they have a presumption of evidence as to how they can tell if your property is being rented. That's kind of what their registration is mostly about is if you have rental property, you have to fill out a registration number, you get a unique registration number that they want you to put on with your listings, wherever you do. And East Hampton goes into great detail as to how they can tell, it's a rebuttable presumption, but how they can tell if it is a rental property that is not being properly registered. And I know that a few other, there have been some questions as to what's the health, safety, and welfare of having short-term rentals? How can, you know, hotels, motels have to go through certain building codes. Bed and breakfast usually have to have some kind of review process. And with a registration system, there's not really any sort of formal review process other than making sure that you check off all the boxes that you need to. And some places have a self-inspection report that they do. East Hampton is one that has a self-inspection form that you have to submit with your registration form. You have to have it signed and notarized. You have to also, they recommend either you have a licensed architect or a licensed engineer also sign off that it meets all the building codes, that it's safe for capitation. And if you don't, I think the alternative to that in East Hampton at least is that you can also allow the co-enforcement officer to issue an inspection report prior to issuing any permit system for the short-term rental. So this is the occupancy chart that Athens is using. As you can see, it says that they have a maximum of two overnight occupants within a rental use unit, plus an amount not to exceed two per bedroom for each unit. And so they list out the number of bedrooms, how many total overnight occupants you can have. You can also have daytime occupants, and so that gives you, again, the total occupancy. It's kind of nice, you know, when you're trying to decipher zoning laws to actually have a table, so it actually lays out, there's no events or buzzes to what the maximum occupancy is. Usually, you see maximum two, but this kind of provides a little bit more detail on it. And then that is an example of an application for rental certificate. As you can see, they ask for standard things, name, street address, mailing address, a local contact person. I can see a lot of tax map identification numbers that they want to know. Can you see any of this? So here's again, number of bedrooms that they have, square footage that they want to show, matching the number of overnight occupants. Again, it's not a difficult form, but it gives a lot of information, how many bathrooms there's going to be. And again, you can have other things. Now, recently, just earlier this year, there was a lawsuit against New York City that you may have seen about short-term rentals. And in that lawsuit, a preliminary injunction was against the city because the city was requesting the host websites to provide this information, how many people were staying in a place, where the rental properties were, what they were paying. And there was a preliminary injunction saying that that was, it was stopped, it hasn't been studied yet, but one of the things, whether it might have been an unreasonable search and seizure from the town to be conducting, getting all those records. We have not seen any litigation so far regarding requesting this information from the applicant itself. So it seems like if you want a permit, you supply this information, and then if you meet all these criterias, you're granted a permit. Usually, the town wants to have a registration system so that they can monitor these, you know, short-term rentals that are valid and properly registered. So that's just another way to kind of keep track of things. I, yeah. Yeah, zoom out of that. And this is an example of the home, the self-inspection. Again, it's just kind of a bunch of checks that you have to make, you know, if you have a smoke detector, you have a carbon monoxide detector. If you have floor plans, sometimes municipalities want you to submit a floor plan so that you can actually see where the bedrooms are located. If you have exit room, exit route, if you have fire extinguisher, just things that you would want to know if this is a safe place for people to be in. And it kind of puts that burden on the owner as opposed to on the burden of the town. Whether you want to have the co-enforcement officer do an inspection or have it signed by an architect or an engineer, that's another option. And then the other option that towns have done is that they actually do a special use permit or classify it as a home occupation. This requires a little bit more review from the town to do, but Village of Cooperstown requires that short-term rentals have a special use permit. So that it's reviewed by the ZPA. The permit is granted for one year, and they can renew it for an additional two years. After that, the special use permit actually expires, and a person can reapply for special use permit, but they have to go through the entire new application and whatever the current zoning laws are for short-term rentals. And Cooperstown requires that you submit parking plans, a lighting plan, they say that you They say that you can't have the lights go off and to impact the adjacent neighbors. If you have security lights, they have to go off as long as they're not essential. They have to go off by 11:00 P.M. So again, that's just a little bit more hands-on for what the municipality is doing to actually, you know, recognize short-term rentals and allow them, but allow them to a certain extent. And again, as I mentioned, the town of Woodstock is another one that is doing more of a permit system. And they're classifying it, it's still a registration system, but they classify it as a home occupation. And again, by doing that, there are certain requirements that a short-term rental has to do. And again, Woodstock, interesting, Woodstock also has, they want to have the host provide a boundary line of the property so that when the guests are staying there, they know what the actual boundaries of the property and there's no issues of trespassing. We've heard that as a possible issue when we've attended public hearings is that, you know, people are trespassing, they don't know where the boundaries are. So that's a way that Woodstock has decided to handle that issue. Woodstock, again, they have not yet approved their local law, but they're in the public hearing process, I believe. Oh, it's still me, sorry. So this is just kind of a general overview of what some of the municipalities are doing, just kind of see them side by side. So, you know, Village of Lake George can't have it in a residential zone, but if it's a commercial use, you require a license, just like if you're a hotel, motel, boarding house. And they do actually define it in the zoning law. The town of Athens has a registration system. Owners are held to what's called a regionally proven business practice. So again, a lot of the enforcement is kind of on the owner to an extent. You know, they have, they don't want, they actually specify in their local law not to be a peace officer, not to put yourself in harm. But, you know, they are trying to put it on the owner to handle noise and any sort of voyeurism or trespassing. So their owner is supposed to be somewhat responsible for that. They also have a provision for garbage and parking. And they ask that the owners maintain their short-term rental period for one year and have it available in cases zoning enforcement officer wishes to use it. Village of Cooperstown uses a special use permit. They set a max occupancy of 10 people. You have to have a driveway access, off-street parking, fire inspections, and floor plans for that. And Woodstock, again, is proposed, but they're going to be using it more of a home occupation. So there is a little bit more review for that. And again, they also require safety and egress plans. Zoning code has to be applied, and property boundaries are given to the guests.
I'll take this one, thank you.
This is sort of the bucket of things that didn't fit in any other category. But I mentioned fees and taxes, that's something that may be coming. I don't know that local municipalities have the authority to taxes kind of activity, but other levels of government do, and that's just something to be aware of. The other thing that is a legal issue to consider is equal protection, which is the principle that similarly situated people need to be treated by the law in the same way. Does raise some questions when you're doing a registration system and you already have laws on the books regarding bed and breakfasts. You need to take a look at how similar STR uses are to bed and breakfasts in inns and other things like that that you are regulating. And you have to make sure that you have a consistency of approach across uses that have a similar impact and scale. For the most part, motels and hotels are going to be a scale level that's above this that they wouldn't fall into that category.
Where are the lights, my abilities?
Is that switch right there?
Owen, I just want to say one other thing that we talked to Michael. We'll try to find a way to get the PowerPoint onto the town of Rhinebeck website so that it'll be something that you can find instead of having to feverishly take notes.
So, yeah, we presented a lot of information. I think we put a lot out there for you to think about. And I know all of you have been involved in this in one way or another up to this point today, regardless. But really, we thought the benefit of today would come from having a discussion with you all in the room about what it is you're doing in your municipalities, what some of the concerns or thoughts are. Owen, I don't know if you want to talk about what's going on. You know, we've heard countywide, if you want, I hope you can do that. Really, just trying to get a discussion going so we can not only hear what you're doing, but see if there are similar concerns and how some of those are being addressed or discussed, you know, the next four to five minutes or so that we have. So, Owen, if you want to talk, if you want to start, kick it off maybe, or take the break on the spot, sorry.
Sure. So, again, I'm the Commissioner of Planning Development for Dutchess County. This is an issue that has been brought to the department from a variety of communities starting last year. It's an issue we planned on working on this year to address it. Many of the issues and concerns you raised today are the same ones we've been looking at. The thing I think you have to consider when looking at is the balanced approach. You know, what needs do these meet in terms of, there are many communities in Dutchess County that don't have a lot of hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and they're bringing in people that need to stay there. So this does fill those needs. And then there is the community character and those needs to look at. In terms of the taxing, the county did negotiate an agreement with Airbnb in 2017 to collect hotel and occupancy taxes in Dutchess County. So they are collecting taxes, and that's coming into the county. It was about 300 and...
330,000.
Thinking 2000...
From 2017, right.
17, from Airbnb. There was a small extra amount, about 30,000, from other short-term rentals.
Was the tax just being routed through Airbnb?
The Airbnb is yes. The agreement with them, they do the collection and the recording. They do suggest that all of the individual operators maintain their own separate records.
Owen, you might want to, the tax rate is 4%, right, Mary Kat?
It's a fee equivalent to the 4%.
4%. And that represents about 9.2 million in non-exempt lodging sales. So there are some exempt lodging sales. But it's about $9.2 million is what that sales tax represents in lodging in Dutchess County for 18.
And other short-term rentals are being collected via the county. They have a software system that can track non-Airbnb short-term rentals. And they sent out a letter to them saying they should register with Commissioner of Finance. So the 4% equivalent fee is collected.
Obviously, Commissioner Finance will be able to answer our questions. You know, I think you've done a real good job trying to put all the different stuff together. And, you know, the definitions line applies to every one bit of your zoning code. Definitions are the most important thing because if it's ambiguous or it's not clear, you're in trouble. So the definitions are clearly the most important part. But I think it's each, I don't think there's one that you're going to be able to copy and paste, and each of your communities can implement. Because each community has a little bit different character, a little different concern in how they want to address it. So you really do have to look at all the different topics and ideas and see how we're planning on doing something very similar. We're not sure what the end product will be, but we're definitely going to be working on it by the next year.
Great, thanks, Owen.
I'm Edel Lockman, and I live in Rhinebeck. And I'm concerned about concentrated use of Airbnb-like short-term rentals in developments. For example, we have pending before the planning board a 36-unit multifamily development that will be right next to our property. It's going to be very lovely, very luxurious, have lots of amenities. And we want to make sure that at some time in the future, the homeowners association doesn't decide, since they live in New York City, to allow short-term rentals of those units and even put together some way to handle it, you know, through the homeowners association. So in this case, this is a special permit site plan application before the planning board. And my husband and I have asked the planning board to control this by prohibiting short-term rentals as a condition of the special permit. And of course, this has not yet been approved. We're waiting to hear from the planning board.
Ray O'Bray from the town of Clinton. Been involved with zoning, zoning enforcement officer in the late eighties and supervisor since then. So I've seen a lot of this, several zoning revision things. The most important part in zoning laws is be precise in your words. Do not leave it ambiguous. Because when you go to court to enforce, the judge reads the paper, not your intent. And if the words are not very clear in understanding, you may lose your case just because he can't understand what you were trying to do. So writing is a very important thing, and have several people look at it. You get the various insights into it because one person can read words one way and another and another. So, you know, just not the attorney, but others than the attorney, look at it. Especially the people that got to enforce it. If they can't enforce it with an understanding of what the rules are, I don't care what you wrote. You're going to probably lose the case. And that's not what you want. It costs you time, money, and then you still got to go back and redo things. So word smithing is very, very important. I can't enforce that anymore than that, so, thank you.
I just want to add something to that. I think that's a great comment, and that builds on what Owen was saying also. And I think that sometimes something that you have to guard against is that often municipalities put together little committee of citizens, and I've been on groups like this where you're tasked with writing the amendment that's going to address this. And for four months, you just keep looking at the different drafts of this. And after a while, you sometimes begin to lose kind of a context to it because you've just been standing knee-deep in it for too long. So I support completely the idea of going out and getting some folks that haven't had anything to do with it, to take a look at it and make sure that they can understand what it says and that it's clear.
Could you please speak a little further about some of the different issues between hosted and unhosted short-term rentals?
I mean, there are a lot of issues related to the difference between hosted and unhosted. And I think one of the primary ones is when you have hosted sharing where your occupants remain on-site with the guests. And obviously, you have, I think, generally less potential for there to be issues because they're going to be regulating and being right there. When you're unhosted sharing, and people vacate those locations or sedicate vacation rentals, obviously, that's part of the reason why I think we saw there are requirements that there be someone local to be able to handle any complaints or issues that might come up related to those. But I think also there's a whole host of issues related to the difference between the two. I don't know, you guys have other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I know, Michelle, this has been, there are some different layers to this because the obvious piece of it is, okay, if there's somebody on-site, then there's somebody who can be accountable in the instance that there are complaints. But there are, and communities sort of tend, I mean, you can, everybody here can see that one of the things that communities are grasping for is a way to try to build some accountability into this and to be able to maintain some control over this without strangling the patient. And so there's a natural gravitation to having the owner on-site. But in the public hearings that we've gone to, there's also a lot of people that say, "Look, I, you know, my customers don't want to have me hanging around. They want the run of my whole place for the weekend while they're up there." And I think that that is true for a lot of people, especially if they're going off into the country. You know, they want a more, I don't want to say isolated, but they want to have the place to themselves. And so a question gets presented in those circumstances. How do you build that accountability in so that the municipality has somewhere to go? And that's why Kim was talking about, there are lots of different approaches to this challenge that are coming from having somebody, you know, within a certain number of miles or getting information from the host or the person that owns the property, wherever they are, someone from the municipality can reach them. So it's got a bunch of different layers to it.
Are there equal protection issues between defining those as two separate uses and allowing one in one district and one in another?
Well, actually, and let me know if you can hear me. I have kind of... So Michelle, I just asked if there's an equal protection issue between if you have hosts versus non-host areas. Again, one way that Woodstock is proposing to do it, and it hasn't passed yet, is that they have three definitions for short-term rentals. One is short-term rental home, which has the owner present, and it has a max of at least one bedroom for rent or no more than two. So what's two bedrooms? And that's considered an STR home. And STR, and again, owner is on-site at all times, that there's a guest in, being, using the unit. And that is permitted in all districts except for the light industrial and the flood zone. And then they have another definition for STR establishment, which allows three to five rooms, owner still on-site. But that is considered more of a business, and therefore, it actually requires a special use permit. And then it also, it's permitted in the hamlet, but in the residential zones, it's actually requires a special use permit. So it requires a little bit more review of it. And then there's an STR non-owner occupied, which is when the entire house is rented, which is something that you do commonly see. And the person, the host or the owner of the property is not on-site. For that, they do require that there is that host. And that also actually requires a special use permit for all of them. So that's just one thing that they do. They might require different layers of review that...
Do they allow different uses in different districts? Have they, like, are all those used in all of the districts in the town?
Uh, yeah, the only way, the only one that is not permitted is industrial and floodway. But in all the other, the residential, the commercial, and the hamlet, they are all permitted, just some are permitted as a break. Some are permitted with special use permit.
And can I ask a question related to that?
Sure.
Are some of these residences used as a B&amp;B in that the owner deals with the renting of it and is totally in charge? Whereas others are Airbnb, someone often hinterly is renting it?
Uh, you know, I have seen different ways that if a short-term rental is defined... So stepping back, you know, B&amp;B is, you know, one of the things that you have to have the owner usually on-site and usually have to have a meal involved. No, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we correct that, please? I'm sorry. I hate to be a Baranski, but can we correct that? In New York State, it is required for all B&amp;Bs to be owner-occupied, and it's not mandatory to serve breakfast?
Oh, okay. I, that was just, yeah, that was just from what I knew.
But in many zoning laws, many zoning laws had that requirement.
I forgot what the question was, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm on the, not on the planning board, and can we discuss it, is it somewhere? And I, for one, would like to control it. It's B&amp;B, and only B&amp;B, only, only with our own law. If you want to rent a one of your rooms through Airbnb, so be it. That's your business. But I would like to control it in the districts where it's allowed. I wouldn't want this taking place where we had high density, where people are one acre zoning and renting four rooms. That seems like chaos in the neighborhood. So...
Well, one way that that might be, is by the way, however you, like, if you want to define B and B versus short-term rental, I know East Hampton, I think, says that verbal or oral agreements, sometimes they mention advertising through website. So I guess that depends on if you, you know, how you want to define short-term rental or just say Airbnb, and then just, you know, but that might go back to that, the first issue, with that, is considered short-term rental. Some people who do short-term rentals wouldn't consider themselves to be a regular B and B.
Well, I would, I for one, would want it to be a B and B, period. And if you, no matter how you get your renter, that's up to you, but you still have to function as a B and B, within the B and B regulation.
Yeah, and that might be, you know, certain...
If that just county does some regulations and has outlined what they, you know, are proposing, does each municipality have to apply those to the overall, you know, plan? If they kind of say, "We're going to require this," then is that all through the county? Or does each municipality decide within those regulations?
Under state law, the county doesn't have local zoning control, so we don't have land use control. So we cannot pass a regulation that would control this through land use.
But the county, county planning department does help local municipalities, because the way that these regulations get put into place is usually through an amendment to the zoning law. And one of the steps in the process of adopting amendment is to send a proposed amendment to the county planning department, and they take a look at those for us and provide us with comments and suggestions.
So counties can provide some examples of things you can look at, that you might want to consider?
And that's, that's part of our intent, is to try and develop some ideas and considerations that the communities then would look at and decide what might work for them.
So they won't be mandated for such a much less...
No.
But they are able to bring, the counties are able to bring a regional perspective, because they're in touch with what's happening countywide, they're able to bring that perspective to particularly municipalities.
Have you seen any STR definitions that grapple with the idea of de minimis use in the same way that New York State taxing authorities say you're allowed to have four six-yard sales a year, and they'll exempt $600 a year income from taxability? And after that, it's considered a true commercial enterprise for which you have to collect sales tax and do all that other stuff. Because one of the things we're talking about is, you know, should someone get a couple of passes and be able to do it a couple of times, and it's not really commercial, it's not really, you go away for a week, you know, once a year. So have you seen that?
Yeah, I, we haven't seen it come out in a statute, but we've definitely seen it being discussed. And the way that it's, that discussion is going along the lines of your thinking, that you can have, I don't know, you can rent your place out for X number of days, say 10 days or something like that, over the course of a calendar year, and then you don't qualify. We have seen some of that.
It happens by days.
Yeah, I was just reading about the STR regulation in Iceland, and they actually happen to have something like that. They have 90 days.
Thank you.
Mr. John?
You kind of glided over the question of whether towns can tax this kind of use, so I gather that's a hard question. Could towns impose either a fee or require a substantial security deposit from the renters to limit the risk of misuse or noise? And make, even possibly make that kind of security deposit vary depending on whether the owner was present or not? Would that be permissible?
So I glided over tax, because I'm not absolutely positive about this, but I'm pretty sure that municipalities don't have the authority to impose that kind of tax. Any authority that local municipalities have, they don't have any inherent authority. Everything that they've got has to come to them from the state, and they don't have that. With regard to administrative fees, municipalities can charge fees for processing and for maintaining the regulation program. They are prohibited from making a profit on the fee structure. So the amount of, the fees have to be titrated to exactly what functions the municipality is performing in connection with the fee. I haven't, your security deposit idea is an interesting one. I haven't heard anything along those lines. I'm not sure off the cuff whether municipalities would have the authority to require something like that. I would guess that there would be some resistance to that, but it's an interesting idea.
I'd love to go back to that question of a cap, possible theoretical cap, on the number of days or the number of weekends or number of people in a house as opposed to the number of bedrooms. I'm wondering about experiences municipalities, specifically smaller ones, like most of us live in, how is that enforced? Because doesn't that place a burden on the, certainly the zoning officer? It's just, I can't see the feasibility of that. But also on the neighbors to say, keep an eye on, how many people are coming and going other than noise creation or parking?
No.
How many days is that place being rented? Is that feasible? What, talk about enforcement generally.
Well, enforcement's got to work, and enforcement should not be left in the hands of people who are living adjacent to the use system. That isn't, shouldn't be where the propulsion for enforcement comes from. So the regulation structure that gets established has to build in a mechanism for being, so for instance, if you're going to have a de minimis category, you're going to, the municipality is have to, is going to have to come up with a system for monitoring the numbers, so that, you know, if a person's renting for only four weekends, how do you figure out whether they go into their fifth weekend? And...
Has that worked anywhere? Are there any examples?
I can't say offhand. I know that some of the outsourcing companies, that's one of the things that they try to keep track of. I don't know about this particular instance, but for STR helper and host compliance, one of the services that they're offering to municipalities is a structure and a system for trying to maintain compliance and some level of enforcement. But that's, you know, that's something that, that's a good question that the municipality needs to figure out. Like, if you're going to create a category like that, you're going to have to figure out a way to police it.
And there was one example of a municipality that actually was, I don't know if this was a proposal or just actual implementation, but they wanted to actually hire a second code enforcement officer strictly for short-term rentals. So that was how that particular municipality was handling it.
And that goes back to your fee issue. If that's what you're going to do, you're going to have a dedicated person, you can probably pay for that through the fee structure.
And a lot of these fee structures are roughly about $100 for a form, and it's usually an annual payment of it.
I think it's going to get higher than that.
Wouldn't that depend on the number of bedrooms or the number of days?
It depends on a lot of different things. It depends on what administrative structure it's supporting.
My name is James Delollio. I'm from a company called The Art of Building. We're coming at this from a slightly different angle in that, you know, we have a line of, we're primarily developers and historic preservationists, but we also run a bunch of vacation rentals, including all the different categories, hosted, non-hosted, a dedicated, dedicated. And over probably the last decade, we've probably run about 20 different properties. I think right now we're running six or seven. So we have a ton of experience with this. And I just wanted to make sure I stated this perspective. You know, one is, I don't think we've ever had a problem with any of our properties, either a problem for ourselves in terms of any kind of major loss or damage. I don't think we've ever had a complaint, except maybe once, or with one property as relates to parking in the decade. We usually have our places filled at about 40 to 45 weekends a year, which if you think of it, about 100 nights a year for our full-time rentals. We're pro-regulation of this, we're pro, especially as it relates to health and safety, especially as it relates to taxation. I think it's important that you regulate for both of those reasons. You have to make sure these places are safe, they are businesses, they should be taxed. But I think the important other perspective of this is that, you know, number one, is that this is a unique economic driver for the region. If you think of the people that are coming to our rentals, they are not coming to a hotel. If they don't come to our rentals in Rhinebeck or Red Hook or Germantown, they're going to go somewhere else. Because the person that is renting the six-bedroom farmhouse on 20 acres is not going to say, "Oh, that's not available, I'm going to go and stay in a hotel." So it's a unique economic driver, and I think as an economic policy for the region, I think we have to be aware of that. Secondly, I think that the, we're a believer in, you know, regulate and legislate around problems. You know, there have been precious few, and to my understanding, even in a place as densely populated as the village of Rhinebeck, there have been very, very few problems. We think there should be accountability. For example, we have 24-hour superintendents and a 24-hour call hour, a call number, so any problem that happens at any time of day, either the refrigerator is broken, or there's noise, or there's parking, there's a number to call, and that can be addressed with a superintendent and a property manager. So realize there's other mechanisms that can be put in place to protect this. And I think importantly, one thing, I think, you know, John and Kim did an outstanding presentation, an overview, but I want to just add one other little tweak on that, which is that any of us have ever traveled to Europe and rented a house in Tuscany or France, or traveled to the Caribbean and rented a house there? We've done this. And realize those are huge drivers of their economies, and that's a huge driver of our experience in those places. And realize that's what we're talking about. So although it's great to look at all the other local new regulations that are happening in other little towns, realize there's also a precedent of this that happens around the world, and that's sort of a lot of what our vacations are all about these days, is going and having these unique home-based experiences in regions we want to be in. And so just remember that this is something, you know, we look at our business as a variation of that and not a variation of, you know, New York City's Airbnb laws. So just keep that in mind, because again, I want to go back to the fact that the reason why our restaurants are full in town, and the reason why our shops are busy, I think is a large part because of the vacation rentals that are coming through here, and a lot of the people that are renovating and buying homes are doing it, you know, renovating outbuildings and carriage houses, in order to have, and this use sort of helps, helps augment their, you know, or helps pay for that. So I just wanted to speak about some of the beneficial aspects of this from our perspective.
I just want to add to what Jim was saying, is that I would say in maybe 90% of the communities that we've looked at or that we've dealt with, there's definitely an understanding of the plus side and the need to, the benefits that this activity brings. It's trying to find, as Owen said, it's trying to find a balance.
I defer to the representatives of the towns on the ground.
Thank you. I just want to thank the town Rhinebeck Planning Board for putting this together and following the panelists. I mean, it's really very helpful, and, you know, we're in Tivoli, and we're looking at this and talking about it, and it helps structure our thinking and make sure we ask the right questions. I have two issues I hope the panelists can speak to. The first is, you know, we've heard from Owen and Ray, you know, define clearly, don't let it be ambiguous, and this might sound silly, but does anyone have a definition for hosted and unhosted? Because that sounds like so black and white, but I think if you start digging into it, I'm sure we all think that you can still run out to Stewart's and get milk, and you could probably see a movie or go to dinner, but at some point, I know as a mayor, that this will come up, and someone's going to say, "It was hosted, I was there." Well, maybe, "Did you sleep there two hours that night or eight hours that night?" And so if you can speak to that. And secondly, what you were talking about is my other point, as a legislator and trying to write code, and it seems you can't get away from counting and how hard it is to count. You know, we can't afford a second John Fettin, thanks, John, you know, but is he going to have to do a stakeout in the bushes across the street with his binoculars to count 14 days? So how, you know, it seems a lot of us come up with a number, you know, so many weekends a year, so many days at a stretch, so many consecutive this or that. And then we can quickly see counting is not so easy. Is there another angle to go at that avoids the difficulty of counting?
So there are definitions for hosted and unhosted out there, so it's matter of looking at some of them and seeing if it fits your particular requirements. And the staffing thing is a concern. I was working with one community who was going down their route of regulation, and their code enforcement officer said, "I don't have time," and then they dropped it, because they didn't want to hire another staff member. But it doesn't mean that down the road, they may need to come back later on and look at it, because it will continue to be a land use that's happening, and so it might make sense to, you know, look at some regulations. So if you, I think permitting is probably maybe the easiest in terms of, well, maybe not for staffing.
Well, here's the thing. What's going on is that there's, and this is part of why it's been taking things a while to get going, is that there's a lot of thinking that's being devoted to try to create a system where, and this is what's at the, that New York, that litigation between Airbnb and the city in New York that Kim referred to, has to do with the extent of influence that the city can get from Airbnb and then from the hosts. But that's all being aimed at trying to create programs where there's as much self-reporting as possible, which is to try to take it out of the, what you're talking about, which is the municipality being in charge of counting everything. And I'm not sure that that's been perfected yet, it's a work in progress, but you're certainly not the only municipal official to be concerned about that and to think about it, because, you know, you talk to any zoning enforcement officer or building inspector, their plates are already full before this arrives at the doorstep. So, and that's why they're, you know, they're outsourcing, the companies that are doing outsourcing are trying to provide some of that service also. But the key is to try to structure a regulation system that require, that, where enforcement works, but which requires the least degree of maintenance to keep it at an operating level.
And potentially less staffing then.
Yeah. Do you have, excuse me, do you have an example of definitions of hosted and unhosted?
Off the top of my head?
Yeah, we can...
I've seen them, and I've written some definitions, but I can't...
But the first thing that you, actually writing the definition isn't sometimes as hard as actually reaching a consensus within your own municipal group about what those words mean. And we're working with one other municipality where we're going on our third month of debate about, between town board members about what it means, going at the very things that you're talking about. Well, if I decide to go visit my kids for the day and my tenants are in there, am I on-site or not?
So the challenge is, we've drafted some things, but they haven't necessarily all adopted them, because it's such a new thing, so, yeah.
John's point too, is if you're going to start with kind of self-regulation, you know, how do the municipalities need police or go after somebody who doesn't comply and do a registration or permit? I'm from Rhinebeck, but I lived in Hawaii for a while, and everybody in the broader runs that, rents something out. And they literally ended up hiring people to go on the, you know, internet and, you know, check Airbnbs and seek, and went after people. And that's not necessarily, I don't know, I mean, effective, but also it just creates feelings and things. But, you know, like, if you're going to do self-regulation, then how do you do it with people who say, "I'm not going to go and do my permit," or...
I'll tell you that the way that that's being addressed is, it's a labor-intensive affair to be, right, going out and actively investigating. For most of the communities that we're looking at are trying to look at two things. One is they're going to what Jim said, and they're hoping that for the most part, there aren't going to be a lot of problems. And the second thing is the licensing, the licensing procedure, you have to come back every year and renew your license. And if there have been problems during the year, most municipalities are saying, "That's when we're going to catch up with people." It may not be perfect. It may not be perfect in terms of, you know, addressing things right at the moment when things are happening during the year, but if you have to come back every year to get your new license, that's going to provide an opportunity for the municipality to maybe say, "You can't have..." You know, there are revocation criteria that are being set up in some of these statutes that justify them saying no to a license renewal. But the other phenomenon that's out there is that if you know you have to come back every year to get your license renewed, and you know that it could be revoked, it also operates as a self-policing mechanism. Operators themselves try to keep themselves in good shape, because they don't want to hassle getting there, especially in a business where you're booking oftentimes far ahead of time. You want to make sure that you have continuity with your license.
Are they running up against people who don't want to comply, or like they're saying, "I'm not, you know, I'm not going to go out and get my permit"?
We haven't got far enough down the pipeline to answer that. It's a good question.
It's similar to typical other permitting for us, like a home occupation permit for communities to have. There you get the application and the license, you pay your fee, and then, like you said, you're not following those regulations.
And just one more point on that, is that another thing that some municipalities have adopted is that when you get a registration form and a permit, you get an individual registration number. And some municipalities have required that when you post on Airbnb or BROB, you list that registration number. So, again, it kind of is a little bit of self-enforcement to find out where it doesn't, but again, some of these host compliance STR helpers, that's one of the things that they might be looking for, is, "Does this have a registration number? Is this up to date with what it has done?" And again, East Hampton, for example, if someone buys a rental property, you know, that registration number isn't transferable. They have to get an own, unique registration number. So, again, that's another possibility that municipalities do.
I mean, another possibility. I just wanted to ask, is there not a relationship between simplicity and enforceability in terms of the codes? You know, in other words, there are... I've looked at hundreds of these all over the country, and you can see some that are more than 15 pages long and require a small army to enforce, you know, versus something that's really... Where there's a decision to focus on a much simpler, you know, with less, fewer categories. It's just a question.
I know this is going to sound counterintuitive to you, but I... And I've had this discussion, not so much in the Hudson Valley, but in work that we've done in the North Country and further out west, that we've had lots of times where communities come and say to us, "Oh, my gosh, you're going to have our zoning code's going to be more than 30 pages." You know, "We don't want that. We don't want to get involved in all that." And then we end up having a discussion that gets back to the point that Ray made earlier, is that if you're really going to include all the definitions that are supposed to be in there, and you're going to include the clarity that has to be in there, so everybody knows what's expected of them, it ends up requiring length, but it ends up being better.
Okay. I really, just to follow up, I meant sort of how many different categories and sections...
You've got one category, yeah.
And the other is, there are communities outside of New York State that have in fact set limits, density limits, distance between... I mean, they do exist.
Spatial, yeah.
Spatial, yes. They've got to put a cap on the number in a particular section, district, or in fact the distance between individual STRs. And this, my last point, is that I think over time, there is more and more information accruing, so more and more sophisticated analyses can be made in terms of economic impacts of STRs. And one study is very clear, and this is done by researchers, that when you look at the economic contribution of a STR in a village, you have to look at... Subtract what the economic and civic contribution would be of a permanent family in that home. You know, so it's a... There's a balance here that's a little more complicated than what you normally see on the slides and so forth, and I think we should consider that.
Yeah. And you just... Your remark adds me to make another remark on my mind, which is that we're often telling communities that you're... Whatever you end up doing with your zoning law doesn't have to be, especially when you're dealing with something new, it doesn't have to be perfect out of the gate, because you're dealing with uncertainties, and so you do the best you can. But one of the great things is that you can amend it as often as is required, and sometimes you have to take a few laps around the track to sort of, I mean, figure out what's going on, and what works and what doesn't, and also account for what's been learned out in the wider world, and you make adjustments.
The thing to keep in mind is, you know, these have been around for a long time. We've been talking about it for a long time, but I think we're still really in a very new period of actually trying to figure out how to regulate these and what makes sense. As we've said, not everything makes sense for everyone, so it's really very unique to each municipality and each situation, just how it goes. So, there's no easy answer. You have to do what you think fits best for your community and kind of check those pieces. But you don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are things out there.
So, my name's Andrew. I actually learned about the Hudson Valley and came through the region through a bed and breakfast. This was before Airbnb made, you know, made it what it is today, all of us sitting here. Everyone, all the towns trying to figure this out. So, it was, you know, it was how I came to the region. So, my wife and I actually bought the bed and breakfast that we stayed in in Tibbely. And I guess just a few reflections on it as somebody who hosts. You know, we do have a bed and breakfast, so we host through that structure in our town. One thing I would say is, I know that I caused more trouble for our village than any of our guests. Joel can attest to that. I also know that, or I'm pretty certain that I am less trouble than the woman who owned the property before us, which Joel might also be able to attest to. But I think, you know, I think we... I think it's really interesting that it is... It's such a curious use, you know? It is a residential use in some regards, although the people who are residing there for that short term are, you know, they're not people who do live there currently, but, you know, like myself, they could be people who will live in your community in the future. So, I think that's really interesting. Another comment was just that when we started our bed and breakfast, we were renting mostly through VRBO, which is the site that used to kind of represent, you know, vacation rental. So, even though we were a bed and breakfast, that was our vehicle for renting. And I would say in the past years, and I think the information put forward by the county really represents this, like, what was the amount collected? It was like...
368,000.
368,000? That was from Airbnb?
About 338 was from Airbnb.
338 from Airbnb. So, only 10% of the... Less than 10% of the total collections of the Duchess... This is the Duchess County bed tax, right? So, less than 10% came from other sources. So, what I was going to say is, you know, Airbnb has been pretty forthcoming in terms of supporting municipalities, you know, like New York City made their rules, or I don't know if LA did, but you said San Diego and San Francisco made their rules. Airbnb really supported them in terms of, you know, they collect the taxes and remit it to Duchess County, like, they help support those rules. So, there might be a way for municipalities to actually reach out to Airbnb, and I know it doesn't capture everything, but it's definitely more than 90% of our rentals. So, some of that, you know, supporting the ability to regulate might be able to ascend through some kind of partnership. I don't really know what's out there, but that's one place I would look. Oh, where are the barn in Tibbely?
Just a quick question. You had mentioned that some planning boards or municipalities have created a more streamlined or expedited process, so it might be a one- or two-meeting adventure as opposed to some of the things that I've had to see and experience being on the bed and planning board. Could you give me a couple of examples of those municipalities so I could reach out and look at their...
They're just in the pipeline right now. So, if there isn't anything that's on the books yet.
I try to listen. I try to listen to my neighbors, and most of them came to Rhinebeck because it's a wonderful residential area, and you have families and kids, and, you know, you feel neighborly. And they worry about having some kind of cap on all of this. You know, specifically, like, somebody buying up 10 properties on Chestnut Street or South Street or whatever, and having nobody there all week, you know? And all of a sudden, like, I went to Martha's Vineyard on vacation and had a great time, and the kids met new, you know, people and whatever, but there's not one permanent resident there if you go there in August. And I don't think that's what people want their homes in Rhinebeck to be permanently for them. So, there's got to be...
I think, you know, that goes back to preserving the character of our community as it's set forth in the comprehensive plan.
And I think that's huge.
And it connects with what Owen was talking about with regard to balance.
Right.
It's figuring out, and that's why this is a... The decision about how to do this is a... It's a public policy decision for the town board, the village board, to figure out where that balance point lies.
And I think that's like almost the number one thing. Nobody's got an issue with a few short-term rentals here and there, but if all of a sudden your whole street is a rental property, you know, where there are people there on weekends, and people with small kids, you know, say, you know, "How do I know who's going to be there?" You know, maybe it's going to be a drug den for the weekend or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I don't think that happens.
But I don't think that happens either.
But the character issue is a real one. And that's why when... That's why I was saying that what looks like an easy question really isn't. The more you unpack it, you know, the more there is to think about.
But there's got to be a cap, and there's got to be, you know, limits. Anyway, that's what I'm hearing from the neighbors.
I'm typically closing out here right about now, but I think we're happy to stick around for a couple minutes and just keep answering the questions, but if you need to leave, by all means.
Have you ever seen an ordinance that sort of said, "Remember, you need to pay a hotel tax, and on like year two, we want to see a receipt from your hotel tax"? Because it strikes me that the hotel tax is like the zoning. Like, you have to pay this hotel tax. People just aren't. Where, like you said, it's not legal, but people are just being allowed. So, I was thinking, maybe year two, you could say, "We want to see a receipt to the canopy for the hotel tax."
Yeah. You know, it's possible that something like that could be a license renewal issue.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Actually, Cooperstown, the one that has the special needs permit, as part of the renewal process, requires you to submit proof that you are all caught up with the bed tax.
Oh, okay. So, you have seen that?
Yeah.
Have you seen anything about state building code being amended to address short-term rentals?
I haven't heard of that.
Certainly, the building code comes into play when we're talking about short-term rentals. That's a big concern of, you know, a lot of people in the communities, and certainly planning boards and elected officials, is how, you know, if you go beyond the simple permit and registration system, how do we start dealing with building codes and regulating with ingress egress, all those sort of things to deal with with merchant-owned properties?
And my question is, how is someone who rents four rooms on Airbnb any different than Jana, who rents four rooms on Wardenburg Road in City? No, I know. I was talking about it. Where's the fairness issue there?
That's an important issue, and that municipalities need to consider that. If there's enough similarity between the uses, then the procedural and approval requirements are going to be the same.
Because I'm sure you all, you all, we do have a bed and breakfast thing for 20 years. I actually used to own the Gables in Rhinebeck as well, and then I went to Hawaii and actually ran vacation rentals, so I've kind of got a lot of that experience. But we are being severely impacted, and I'm not saying there shouldn't be options and all of that, but, you know, we do jump through. We had to come and get permits. We had inspections. We pay Duchess County comes and does our water. We pay all kinds of... Because we're a business. We are a business. And just like, I appreciate that Jim said, you know, he's a business. He's, you know... But when we talk with people, "Oh, and everybody has a little room to rent or something," but that's all like... There's a PI, which is Professional Association of Acrebers, that had webinars on, it's like 1,000 cuts for these, for bed and breakfast, you know? And we have a really good establishment that we've been fortunate to bring people to the area, and a lot of them have bought homes around here, and some of them do have little Airbnbs and things, but I just...
Yep. The fairness issue is a good... It's a good question, and municipalities are going to have to address that.
And wouldn't our towns and villages love a cut of that $300,000? I mean, you know, we're all trying, you know, struggling with our budgets.
Yep. Not above my pay grade, though.
Yeah, no, I know.
That's a state legislature issue.
I want to thank you all tonight. I want to especially thank Jim, Catherine, and John, and Kim, because this is... Shouldn't show me how much I didn't know and I need to know in a meaningful way. This is an issue in Rhinebeck we're going to be dealing with. I think another issue that sort of is tangential to this is affordable housing. How does this whole thing deal with affordable housing? And that's another issue we're dealing with in Rhinebeck, and we need to be able to balance these things. There's a lot of good going on. I think we need to work on some of the problems. I think the fairness and the equity issue is central to whatever we decide to do. If we're going to require permits from some people to do a certain thing, then it needs to be required of all people doing that certain thing. We need to be fair to everybody. We want to be in our community.
I have another question.
Yes?
I know that those who are in Rhinebeck have gone to some venues, they, you know, are tackling this issue. Do we know, like, how close they are, or what's...
So, I want to thank you all for coming. This has been tremendously helpful. And I want to thank the representative of the county, Owen and all, and coming up, because your help is going to be essential in how towns...
We're concerned about affordable housing, too.
Yes.
That said, I use Airbnb, so I don't like being a...